Our Father.
Father.
Lord in heaven, how to be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call please. All right, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the agenda and the addendum, please?
I'll move second.
Roll call. All right, Mr. Humphrey?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go into public participation, administrators' reports. Uh, first up is Brooke Intermediate, Shelley Sowers.
We just kicked off our yearly fundraiser. Um, it goes towards field trips mostly. Um, it goes, uh, last year we bought the different colored shirts for Field Day, which was pretty awesome, seeing all the different homerooms each other and color out in the field. We did Field Day. Plan on doing that again this year. Uh, fifth grade's gonna go to Coastside, so that'll help with that. Third grade always goes to the IG um, down at Bell Valley, so that'll be coming up in May. And then fourth grade usually does something. It'll probably be, usually they do movies, but we'll see. Um, Mrs. Brownie might get excited and do something a little more extravagant, since this is her last year. Um, music is working on the recorder, so there's a lot of tweeting going on in the building right now. It's always a fun time.
My house, too.
Parent-teacher conferences are coming up, which is crazy to think that we're almost three quarters of the way through the school year and only three snow days. Um, I don't know where the snow's at, but just gonna mention that. Which is, on the flip side of that, we've had a lot of school this year, which has been great, and we've needed it. So, it has been a good thing. Um, jump rope is winding down. They have two more major, kind of major performances. One during the day, they're going to Currency Industries over here and jumping for them, and then our last big hurrah, which includes also the jumper club and the team. Um, they're gonna perform for Brooke at 1:15, and then the, anybody in the community, parents, all of that, at 6:30 on, uh, Monday, the 27th. I've forgotten, didn't write that date down here, but it's the 27th. So, anybody that wants to come to that, it's pretty awesome. They do do a lights out, um, on both performances. That makes me sick because of all the moving of the ropes, but it is pretty cool. Um, I did get to go see them at, um, Marietta, and it was pretty awesome to watch them out there and all the people interacting with them, so it was, it was an awesome time. Lastly, um, we have Meskangum University coming in. I know the high school's gonna find jumping on them, but they, they let, they're gonna let fourth and fifth grade go watch their performance. They're bringing in all kinds of different musical things for the kids to watch, which is pretty awesome. Um, that's about it. What's going on?
Can I say real quick, um, I met with Shelley today. She took on our homeless liaison position this year. No stipend, additional time or anything, and has done an amazing job. So, just to get that on the record.
Right, and also, do you wanna talk about your, um, video thing?
Oh, are you in it?
So, he is. He's gonna be in it. Um, so we have a, we've been doing culture, culture building across the district has been something that we've wanted to do, and, and we do little things. Um, the first one was like Snapchat filters, and you had to guess which staff, staff member was a Snapchat filter. This time, we did walk-up videos, like in Major League Baseball with, or not videos, but music. Like in Major League Baseball, when they come up, you hear the music playing, and it's like their big one. Well, all the staff members picked a song, and part of the little competition that we got going on is, we play a song in the morning and a song in the afternoon, and the, the staff have to guess whose song it is. So then I'm gonna buy either a gift card or their lunch, um, to the one that is winning, which right now is Kelly Moore. She has 12 out of 24 of guesses, whichever they think she's cheating. Um, she's very sneaky and listens to a lot of people when they're talking, so. Um, it's been a lot of fun, and then we're gonna, um, what we've had Kay do, Kay, we wrapped him into this. He did little short video clips of everybody coming out of their classroom, introducing themselves, and then we're gonna put the music behind that and put it on social media, so everybody can see, okay, here's Brooke, here's all the staff. Just kinda make it a fun thing.
Such a creative idea. I'd have never come up with something like that.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
They, it is, it's been interesting conversations.
The older you get in life, the more you remember those really fun times, and, you know, younger to school and younger classes. That's good.
I got it.
All right, Meadowbrook Middle School, Doug, go. Shepherd, please.
Uh, we have a couple things. Uh, I think you've seen on Facebook, Ms. Hot's STEM class. Uh, they've been doing a lot of neat things with, uh, the STEM. Uh, and it's been posted on Facebook, uh, the 3D pens and just, uh, they haven't got to the robotics yet, and actually, they're not going to, cause Ms. Hot is now on maternity leave. Um, before next meeting, uh, our eighth graders will be headed to DC next month, uh, for their DC trip. Uh, parent-teacher conference is coming up, uh, here as well. Um, as far as sports-wise, the eighth grade basketball, uh, won the MVL championship last night. Uh, wrestling had, uh, two MVL champions, and I believe they have seven moving to districts this weekend. Does that sound right?
Yeah, that's not really associated with the OHSA, but yes.
Okay, so, that's what we have going on.
That's boys' basketball, I saw.
Boys' basketball, eighth graders, yes.
How the seventh, please, that's.
Uh, they lost in the semifinals as a league. They had a pretty good year, too, though.
They finished over 500, and they got some really nice pieces there. Sounds like Jinger, how they're strong all the way around.
Four seed, going in.
Yeah.
Meadowbrook High School, Scott, Golick and Jeff Wheeler.
I'll take, uh, Shelley on March 2nd, in conjunction with Mr. Harvey, uh, and the band. They'll be putting on a performance at the high school. We pretty much have it set in stone, but there's some things to work out before we put it out there to the public, time-wise and everything. We think it'll be good for all the students that'll be there. Uh, jumping off of Doug, uh, our STEM class at the high school is taught by Mrs. Katie Janusik, and there was this interesting project that we're hoping that next meeting, we have a video of this, but we had, I think it was three gentlemen, I believe, created, uh, an ATM machine. So, they made it out of cardboard box, they used Monopoly money with a computer. Don't tell me how, but brought us in. We told them how much we wanted to withdraw, hit a few buttons, and it spit out Monopoly money, the exact amount that you asked for.
That's cool.
Wow.
It was amazing. Yeah, like, thinking about hiring, just thinking, seems like you're getting to go to the ATM machine with me. But anyway, uh, so kudos to Ms. Janusik in, in that. Uh, in January, uh, our band hosted a solo ensemble, 400 entries. We had almost every room filled up. Um, we had 10 kids in that. We had three with superiors, which is the highest rating you can get. Five with excellent, which is the next, and we had two with good, so we didn't have any ratings below a three, which is, which is pretty good. Um, we had our culture building day, which is part of our advisory and, and PBIS as well. Um, kids had to make, I know it sounds a little elementary-ish, but they were really excited about it. They, they took their hand, they drew a picture, they cut it out, and then they kinda decorated their hand to kinda model themselves for who they were. Give you an example, uh, one kid had me go up, and he had a, a set of headgear on, so he was a wrestler, and he had things in there. He wants to be a doctor someday, so it was on his, so it was kinda neat, and it gave them a chance to, uh, pick, choose, and show us what they wanna be. Friday, we have, uh, PBIS incentive. It's Little Debbie Day, which you can imagine what Little Debbie Day is. They're getting cake, and, and, and so they'll be hyper.
Is the word invited?
What's that?
Hopefully five kids miss.
I was gonna say, we have enough?
Yeah, we should have them.
Only if you have a full head of hair, so that's gone.
Those pedgerons are awful good.
Our FFA also held a district event at the high school, um, in the Colt College, uh, which was awesome that we were able to, um, host that. Cackleys obviously did a nice job, and they are currently, uh, in Columbus. They just got finished at Ohio State to go through a few things, and they'll be going to the hockey match tonight. Uh, so rewarding themselves. And last, it is scheduling time, uh, believe it or not, at the high school already. Uh, myself and, and Mr. Wheeler, along with the guidance counselors, are working out a little different thing in the schedule this year to try to keep as many kids at the end of the day we can. We have a lot of kids that leave early, uh, so hopefully that, that'll be best for the whole building as a whole. Uh, so when we have pep assemblies and things like, um, Powder Puff, we'll have all the kids there that can participate.
You, uh, we're gonna vote on it here in a little bit, but you wanna talk as well about, uh, Mr. Cackley's idea for the letter and everything?
Sure. He came to me a, a few months back, and, uh, he just presented, uh, what about an FFA letter? I'd never heard of it before. But, um, I sent over the copy, and it should be in your packet. It's not very, I mean, it's not easy to obtain. And so he put restrictions, so for those kids that are in FFA, um, they will come out if they meet these requirements with an FFA letter, okay? Which will be designated on the letter, uh, that they're FFA. He has some drawings of what that letter will look like. Uh, but the kids are pumped about it. Uh, it's another way to, um, show, you know, what we're doing to the FFA and how good they are. In, in my opinion, they do a lot, especially out-of-school stuff. They deserve to have, if they wanna have a patch to, to represent Meadowbrook and FFA, I think it's a great idea.
And Mr. Cack, well, Mr. and Mrs. Cackley put a ton of work into.
They did, and it is all of them.
What does it look like, and I mean, they, they, it's a great idea.
Phenomenal job.
My experience with FFA, a lot of those kids are so busy all the time on the farm. They don't have time to play sports, so they don't go out and get the sports letters and the things. Uh, that's an awesome idea.
And they should be recognized, because they said they put a ton of.
A lot of time.
I think it's a fant, I never heard of it either, but it's a fantastic idea.
It was awesome.
Very good. All right, athletic administrator, Jeff Wheeler, please.
Yep, I'm just gonna piggyback on Doug, uh, just 'cause I thought it was, it's pretty amazing. Uh, Colton Snyder, which is a middle school wrestler, uh, not only, uh, got first place at the, uh, MVL championships last week, but he got, uh, most valuable wrestler in the whole entire tournament. Uh, he's a lack of words, he's a stud. Uh, he's, uh, he's gonna be really, really exciting the next four years. I'm glad that we're gonna get him at the high school, cause uh, there's, there's chances there that he's going to, uh, make some school history, hopefully. I mean, that's high, high praise, but he's that good. Uh, very developed for a, for a middle school boy, I guess. You walked in here, you'd think he's a graduate.
Is his dad Dicky?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I went to school, went to school with Dick. His dad was that way.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, a big, strong guy at a very early age.
Yep, so, he's following, he's following in those footsteps, so that's exciting. Um, believe it or not, spring sports starts Monday, um, so it's here. Um, hopefully the weather, weather, uh, continues to cooperate, because it's been fantastic, and we'll have, uh, kids out on the ball diamonds and track, uh, very soon. Um, as far as high school sports, tomorrow night, uh, if you're not busy, uh, I invite you to come out to our boys' basketball game. It is senior night. Uh, we will be recognizing our three, uh, male senior, uh, athletes, as well as our, uh, senior manager. Um, that will start about, uh, 6:30, cause we're only playing two quarters of JV, so Darren, make sure you're there on time. It's pretty important. Girls' basketball, uh, this is huge for, uh, girls' basketball program. Uh, they opened up tournament play last night and got a, got a win. I texted Kirby Graham, uh, a couple weeks ago, cause you know, we, we've had a lot of success this year, and I was just curious, cause I know I've been here 10 years, and we haven't had a tournament win. Uh, since I've been here, uh, 2011 was the last time girls' basketball had a tournament win, so, uh, we're moving in the right direction. I mean, that's, you got, you gotta win before you, you learn how to win, and, and they're, they're at that point right now. So, they play Saturday at Westminster Kingdom, 1 o'clock, in a sectional championship, and, and, uh, we've already played them twice this year. Uh, both times, it was in single digits as far as the score, uh, late in the fourth quarter, so we go out and play a great game, uh, we have a chance to be sectional champion, so that's exciting. And then boys', uh, wrestling, or I, I wanna rephrase that, wrestling, cause we do have a couple females on the team, but there's an MVL, the MVL tournament is this weekend, uh, that is being held at New Lex at 10:00. And then their sectional tournament begins next Saturday, or the, uh, fall, yeah, next Saturday, uh, and that's at Sandy Valley, uh, beginning at 10:00 AM. So, winter's wrapping up, and, uh, like I said, spring starts Monday.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to touch on Kirby real quick. So I took over, uh, yearbooks for him from the eighties, so that he's compiling all the girls' volleyball now. Just the amount of work he puts in to compile everybody's records is amazing.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
He came here for eight hours a day, a couple days, and went through the basement, going through rocks, just to see if he could stumble across something.
Yep, he'll send me a random text and say, hey, I found this, and he's changed your update. I said, all right, we're, we're on it, so it's, uh, it's unbelievable.
It's an nice habit, man.
Yes. All right, we're to curriculum director, Scott Baughman, please.
Yeah, we got a great start to the year. Um, beginning of school year, Devin and I decided we wanna kinda realign, uh, the district leadership team, uh, a little bit different than we've done in years past, so we, uh, wanted to get a little bit more, uh, leadership pushed through the building administrators and our staff specifically. So we took our four main OIP goals the district has, and we actually broke the, uh, district leadership team into subgroups. Um, so each subgroup is responsible for their goal, and they meet on their own outside of DLT once, once every other month, uh, to talk specifically about that goal, and things that we can address, how can we update it, and things of that nature. It's been really, really positive so far. They had, uh, two or three different subgroup meetings within themselves, on top of our regular DLT meetings. Um, just making some progress in terms of, you know, where our needs are as a district, and what we need to address to make ourselves better. Um, and speaking of that, you know, two of our main goals are, are math and literacy, uh, as I think every district in the state may be. Um, you know, we've been talking about OG for a long, long time now. Uh, it's one of our literacy programs we use. Uh, we, uh, probably have mentioned in the past, we do have two uh, ladies at Brooke Intermediate that are finishing up finally, uh, their OG practitioner, um, uh, licensure, I guess it's called. Uh, in which they're gonna actually be trained OG trainers themselves, so they're gonna be direct within the district people who can go around and help everyone uh, with that program and how it can kinda really implement, you know, success in literacy, going K through five mainly, but even, even higher than that.
We're like the only district in the state of Ohio, in the state of Ohio that have two, and, and really the whole region is what Jenny and Kristy, I'm saying, the company says, like, no other district has two.
Uh, it's Jenny Blatter and Kristy Turner, if you don't know that. I actually just talked to Kristy again about it today. She's got a couple more things she's finishing up here in the spring, and then, and you know, it's gonna be a great tool for us to have as a district to really help kinda hopefully improve the literacy goals throughout. Uh, math, obviously, is another goal. We just finished up this week, our last round of kind of embedded math PD with Kai Davis. Uh, it really kinda helped us look at our whole math curriculum, K through 12. Uh, and we've had three different times this year where she's met with grades almost individually, and done a lot of work with them to try to kinda revamp and realign some of the things we're doing in the math department, so that's finishing up. Uh, we'll continue to work with her in the future, and then, uh, last was, uh, ODE, and their uh, grand wisdom of all things, again, has a new tool that got released this week called EdSteps, uh, which leads into what they do, the Needs Assessment Program. So, every year, our building administrators and then our district has to look at what are our needs in the district, and then look at those OIP goals we mentioned before. Are those the ones we wanna continue, are our needs fit those goals, and then obviously the state and federal funding that kinda can come with that is all part of that process. So, started that process, uh, which will wrap up here in about a month or so, and then we want it next year.
I just wanna mention, Shelley touched on something with, with all the school we missed with COVID and everything. You know, we've had conversations in the past few years how our kids, you know, they were behind, and, and everybody hears opinion. Do you feel like the kids are catching up, like we're, like as a, as a district, are we? You know, cause there was a lot of learning.
Yeah, and, and I, I mean.
That was missed, it was.
I think we'll all admit, going.
The malls had to be in the right direction.
That's what, yeah.
Saying your person, yeah.
If you watch the news, you know, I watch the news, and it's like, you know, a lot of schools, not in Ohio, that I notice so much, but they're still really struggling with test scores.
Absolutely.
It's nobody's fault. It's what we went through, but I was just curious, because.
And we're, we are seeing early progress with the data with that. Um, and obviously state tests aren't until springtime, but, um, you know, and ours aren't where we want them to be. I don't think anybody would say that, but we're, we're making progress. We're looking at some of the early with our math data, uh, we'll take multiple times a year, and we're seeing some progress there. We're really seeing a lot of advancement in our math. Second year, working with Kai in terms of some of the young grades trying to fill those gaps that have been growing exponentially during COVID times. Um, so, you know, we're seeing quite a bit. Um, I know Shelley and I talked about it, and she's seen a lot of progress, especially OG starting.
Yeah. That only pushing through the programs.
Well, I know we got great people, and I, I know everybody's worked extra hard, and the teachers and, and administrators, the district deserves all the praise they can get. It's just, I just wondered how everybody felt in general. I mean, I know it's gonna take time. It's gonna definitely take time to.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a few.
Cause it's time loss, so you've got.
You know, in grade school, you, you remember certain things you learn, and then you get my age, and you think, okay, I, if you miss something, or you, you were out of school for a period, you were ill, your our whole district was out of school for, for a long time, and it just, it, as a parent.
You were at that age plays a big role in that, because what's your myths? You know, what part of that?
The kindergartners that were in the year that we shut down are my third graders, and, and it definitely, you can see it in the data.
You can see a difference.
But the, the amount of change that they've had since, I mean, I can only say for what I've had them from third grade to where they're at right now in third grade, and it's been huge gains.
Well, I'm confident everybody's doing their best, and that we're gonna get through it, and the kids will, will catch up with, especially with everybody we have here in the district, so thank you, everyone.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to, or do we have any public participants? Nobody? Anybody sign in? That's good news.
Love it. Life has something to say.
She always has something to say.
I'm not gonna call on her right now.
Well, she was asking where you were.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Greg Trezor's report.
All right, um, I have approval of the minutes for the organizational regular meetings that were held on January 12. Through with the financial report for January 2023, and then, uh, we have the two, uh, fund transfers, which is, that's the third course to, uh, get on track with the building project, and, um, we have the three that announce certificates. And then the last one is adopting the resolution and accepting the amounts and rates. It's determined by the Currits County Budget Commission, and that's just a routine, uh, annual uh, matter that this has to be approved for our talks, Lowies.
Very good. Do I have a motion? Darren?
I have a, I have a question. Brad, what's the Panhandle cleaning and restoration?
Um, that was secret element today, um, earlier in the year, we waited on insurance money, and we finally got the insurance track, so. That's what that was.
We're actually still kinda fighting with them to get more money.
Trying out the time. Yeah, this was their initial cleaning, and did you second the?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I thought, but I wanna make sure.
All right, roll call, please.
All right, uh, Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Now, just real quick, Matt had an emergency at home, and so he kinda whispered, no, I don't think it's anything, but it's, so he had to leave.
Okay, uh, standing committees, uh, policy, Darren?
Nope.
Nothing? Athletic, uh, Brad, Mike?
Anything I got is, are we gonna look into, or have you, or, uh, baseball season's coming up, and I heard, uh, problems in the left field, bus range?
Uh, what in left field? We finished that, we fixed that a couple years ago. Last year, we had, uh, some issues with centerfield that we haven't had in 10 years, so I'm not sure if it was just a bad spring, which we did have a very wet spring last year, so.
We need the ground holes. There are some nice.
But it was the, uh, it was the first time in 10 years that we've ever had issues. We actually fixed left field two, three years ago. Uh, centerfield was our main issue last year, so again, we're gonna evaluate this year. I've already talked to Skinner about it. We do have plans and plays if we continue having issues, but it might be something, uh, if something got plugged somewhere that we're unaware of, that we might have to, to look into fixing. But last year, we had a really, really wet winter, or really, really, really wet, but it wasn't really wet winter that led into spring. Um, so we did have some issues with centerfield, but again, we're just gonna have to take, never had an issue, uh, prior to that, so.
Do we have a ground hole? I heard you mention it.
Yes, there is, there was, um.
From the, like, Brook out to the ba, baseball field?
The modulars.
As I say.
It's like under the modulars and over to the buildings back there.
We can have somebody like box trap them or something. I mean, would, is there a problem with the district?
I've got a guy. We have a guy that kinda does stuff like that.
Do you?
Yeah, we can, uh.
I, I mean, we might have to, yeah.
I, I know there's things, they go everywhere, so, and that's.
I just remember when the boys played.
Look like she mentioned.
Well, that's what, yeah.
That'll be part of their letter, probably.
We might mention it to FFA and say, can you guys help us with?
Yeah, can you live travel?
Yeah, mention to, you know, our FFA advisor, say, good practice.
Poisoning over shooting.
Yeah, the live trap, you can do that.
I live trapped some years ago at my, the building, one of the buildings I had, and just, you know, hauling out, letting go, he puts peanut butter or something in there. Okay, something to maybe check on.
Okay, athletic, uh, legislative, uh, student achievement, Mike?
No, I don't, I don't have anything. The legislative part is back in session, but really nothing that I've seen come across that's important.
Anything in Mideast?
Um, no, things are, uh, going along well. Uh, they're still working on, they've got the CDL stuff up and running, but they, they, we bought a, a place out out in the country where they can train. Uh, right now, they're working with the EPA and the other, um, agencies to make sure that they can get the parking lot, um, gravelled. So, uh, withstand the semis that are in there.
Yeah.
And the school buses, and then once they get that, they'll, but they've already started a lot, some of the trainings.
So, maybe this summer's full.
Hopefully.
He was telling me the other day, they were hiring kids, 120,000 starting out, team driving to New Jersey.
Huge, huge opportunity.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that have been neat in high school?
Yeah.
That'd been really neat. Okay, uh, personnel, insurance, Matt's not here, I don't, there's nothing there.
Uh, building and grounds, Brad?
Nothing extra at this time.
Other than our ground hole problem.
I think that spot over there by the middle school's good now, isn't it? I haven't seen anything since. Uh, I'm gonna check on that tomorrow. Okay, so I just thought about it earlier. I haven't, I haven't noticed anything, anyway. I haven't looked at it, but.
Nothing on audit. Uh, Darren, community outreach, anything you've heard, or?
Nope.
No? Uh, and business advisory committee? No? All right.
Ready.
Uh, we are in old business, uh. We, well, are we gonna touch on this tonight, the, the, the sting, Shalom and I?
I think we just, we're gonna.
Were you wanting to table it to talk about it?
Yeah, we, let's table that, and we can.
Bring it back up.
Good point.
Afterwards.
I see on the agenda, I wanna at least mention it, so.
So, yeah, there could be.
Yeah.
There could be action after executive session.
Okay.
Did you get that, Brandon?
Uh, superintendent's report, Devin.
All right, I'm gonna make a note of that, so I don't forget about it, uh, for the whole thing. Lot on here, a lot of it's house cleaning, um, employment's largely, uh, spring coaches. Uh, B, approval of the district calendar is presented for 2324. Now, I will tell you that is the calendar, but depending on the building project, that is definitely subject to change. Approved memorandum of understanding to O.C. and Rowland Hills for Mr. Cornet and Mr. Anderson's personal leave payout, which I believe we've discussed. A couple resignations at D. Brooke Jump Rope got a donation from Blue Racer Midstreet, which I think they get a donation for about every year, don't they?
That was the first one from Blue Racer.
We get, we must get one from Blue Racer every year, cause I see that. I don't know that stuff.
Well, I know one of the youth on the jumper team.
Yes, yes.
Big.
Yes, she's one of the engineers, I believe.
Oh, okay, why'd I say, I've, I've seen them all here.
It's his wife. She works at Blue Racer.
Oh, all right, yeah, cause we seem to get some donations from them. Um, F, approved membership resolution between OHSAA and Rowland Hills. G, approved the high school handbook concerning FFA letter requirements. Ideally, we just made some adjustments in the handbook, so the students could get them, so we're asking you to approve the handbook as it now reads. H, approve amended and restated real estate purchase agreement with Bysville. We just had to adjust, um, the agreement we made with Bysville because of the building project. Um, ideally, you know, we didn't take into account that that would, that's part of the deal for the building project, so they only get it if everything, you know, everything gets it. So we just had to change some language to make it a little cleaner. Uh, approved agreement to allow UC interns to serve in a limited substitute capacity. Uh, UC's doing us a favor letting that our interns that are still in school work as subs part-time, which is helping out. And that leads me into J, approved resolution establishing educational requirements for substitute teachers. Assuming this passes, uh, approved individuals with associates degrees will be able to substitute teach, which will obviously will really help our limited, our shortages.
Will there be an age limit on that?
There is.
Okay, cause some kids graduate from high school.
It's still been there, yeah. Yeah, I think I put four. I wrote that in, yeah, cause that was my big concern. That's what held us up so long. Everybody else passed it a while ago, but I was trying to figure out how I wanted to do that. And K, approved NEOL update is presented, which is also largely just changing some language around, so. So, once again, A through K.
Do I have a motion for A through K?
Motion?
I'll say it.
Roll call.
All right, Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, any information items?
I have a couple. I'll be quick. I hear all the comments about how much I talk. Preschool registration is now open. I'm hoping to expand to five or six classrooms from the three we currently have, which, big change for us. And we are going to have a groundbreaking ceremony on May twelfth at the, at the high school. Um, more details will be coming on that, but, um, we're definitely gonna have some kids involved and try to get some kids from each building to be involved in getting the first shovelfuls and obviously the ones aboard there and past and current, so that's all good.
All right, uh, we're gonna go into executive session to consider the sale of property at competitive bidding. Do I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Hold on. Second.
Roll call.
All right, uh, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
And there could be action following depending on the situation.
We can go a mile, that's if you want.